Okay, good evening everybody. I'm going to get started. Thank you for coming. I'm going to go ahead and call this in Twitter at 6:30. I think you will join me for the live saloon.
... The United States of America and the United Republic where which stands. One nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, so can you do that? I have a full frame of questions. Sorry, so loud. Okay, um, we are going to get started with 2.0, a special order. A press release went out today from NFHS about one of our coaches. And Athletic Director Rob Bonner will now tell us more.
Thank you Board. Ernie Brooks, could you please come up here? I love this part. So Mr. Brooks does not like this part, which makes me like it even more. So last year, Ernie Brooks was awarded State Coach of the Year for Boys Track. And a wonderful award. Yeah, that's nice. Ernie went on to compete at the sectional level with Alaska, Idaho, Montana, Oregon, Washington, and Wyoming. So he was awarded the Section 8 sectional Coach of the Year. From there, it drops into the, uh, to the, to the national competition. Last week, Ernie Brooks was awarded the NFHS National Coach of the Year for Men's Track and Field. So we have many, uh, many great coaches and we've had a great deal of, of Coach Awards with that state and sectional. This is the first one, uh, to my knowledge in my tenure here, uh, that we've had a National Coach of the Year. How it works now is he's going to, uh, get his awards through NFHS and get his plaque. Um, you know, I'd like to get that from him and recreate it and have one in the trophy case as well as one that he could probably hang on his wall. Yeah. But I can't tell you how, um, how grateful we are to have a person like Ernie Brooks. And I know he has something to say.
Yes. Yeah, I'm not sure how this thing works here. Uh, I think I would have been telling people is, is that a champion gave us a chance to tell our story. And our story about what we've done here. And telling that story put us on the national level. Uh, we have great coaches here. We have a great community. And that story has been building relationships. Rocky Minor, I know you're sitting right out there somewhere. Rocky hired us, hired me, and his big thing was building relationships. And that's what our program does. And the staff that I have is, uh, it's pretty amazing. So this award's not just me, it's my coaching staff. We've been together a while and all those coaches that have come before me, um, building this legacy that we have here. And so, thank you.
Board, do you have any questions for Ernie?
I just want to comment to you, Ernie, that this is a big win for you. This is a big win for Kirk County. But the real winners are every kid whose life you have touched. You are an extraordinary individual and thank you for making a difference in the lives of kids.
Thank you both. Congratulations, Mr. Brooks. Okay, um, 3.0, agenda additions, deletions, or revisions and agenda approval.
Madam Chairman, a number of items to add. If I can read them. Madam Chairman, I move to move public comments to the bottom of the agenda. I move to adopt the agenda with these additions, to move public comments to the bottom of the agenda. To remove the hiring of Jessica Brumble from the agenda. My understanding is that the investigation report on that is not back yet. To add a discussion after 10.0 about a possible regular work session. And to add a 4.1 reconsideration of previous action taken.
Okay, so just to make sure I have everything, you want to move, or you're motioning for move public comment to 12? After 12?
11.1? But after 12?
Yeah, you'll just... You're going to, or you would also like to... I need to make sure I have all my tux in around. Remove the hiring, it'd be 6.81 of Jessica Brumble because the investigation is not back yet. Under 10, you want to talk about a work session? And you want to add 4.1, the reconsideration to action taken? Is that correct?
Yes.
Was that all of them?
That was it.
It's a reconsideration. Okay. Ms. Tammy, did you get all of that? Okay. Do we have anything else? If we're going to, um... Do we have a motion?
That was a motion.
Oh, that was, sorry, second.
I'll second.
Okay. Um, so we have a motion on the table to all of those things I've just listed, and we have a second. Any more discussion? All right, let's vote. Uh, roll call vote, Scott?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Okay, 4.0, Board Action from Executive Session. You're with me? 4.1.
Yeah, that's the review at the end of last night. Okay, okay.
Madam Chair, um, this is dealing with various complaints received in the last week. There are a number of them. We're only proposing to deal with a couple of them. I'll start with complaint received from Justin Alderman of the Prineville Review who alleged, who submitted a grievance to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission regarding the Board's, um, holding of an executive session on December 9th. The essence of that complaint was that the Board called it without giving the subjects of that hearing an opportunity to, to have an open hearing. That is a correct statement. The Board was relying on past practice, which turns out is not the way to do that. And so, we have received a draft letter from legal counsel that we would like to, um, send to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission explaining that. And I move that we send the letter and acknowledge the violation occurred. Second?
We have a motion on the table to go ahead with a draft that legal has written up to address the, um, public meetings grievance that was filed against the Board from, uh, Prineville Review reporter Justin Alderman. And, um, we also have a second. Is there further discussion? All right, uh, roll call vote, Scott?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And aye as well. Thank you. For that. Do we have anything further on?
Yes, Madam Chairman, we have a complaint filed against Cheyenne Edgerly and Jessica Brumble from complainant Jake Huffman. This alleges that we discussed improperly his employment-related performance and abilities during an executive session on 12/9. He cites as evidence, um, a transcript of a, an unofficial transcript of an executive session. We, I propose that we dismiss that complaint on two grounds. First, that there is no way to quote from an official transcript since it's still held in the executive session as far as the district is concerned. And secondly, that there is no sanction we can take against resigned Board members. So I move to dismiss.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the table to, um, dismiss the complaint from Mr. Huffman against a former Board member. And we have a second on the table. Is there further discussion? Okay, Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. In regards to the other complaints, sorry, I was trying to get my, all my paperwork in a row. Um, the other complaints that we had against two Board members, we ran into a conundrum because two of the Board members were listed in those complaints and, um, we both have recused ourselves. And so that left one Board member, and that's not a quorum. So, we cannot take action on those complaints filed by the complainants against two of us Board members. So as of right now, because we cannot take action on that, we do not have a quorum on that because there's only one Board member to decide whether that warrants further investigation or not. So at this time, I believe we are not taking action on those.
Are we at 4.1?
Are we at 4.1? Yes?
Madam Chairman, I move to reconsider the action taken at the last Board meeting to move forward with the investigation of a complaint filed by Rob Bonner against Cheyenne Edgerly, again, on the basis of the fact that Ms. Edgerly is no longer here and we can no longer take any action against her.
Second.
So we have a motion on the table, um, for the reconsideration of action previously taken by this Board, um, to not move further with the investigation. Nope?
Madam Chair, I think I conflated two motions there. We should vote on the motion to reconsider and then vote to deny the complaint.
Okay, so we're going to...
So my motion is to reconsider at this point.
All right. Are you still seconding that?
I'm still seconding.
Okay, so the motion is to reconsider the previous action taken and a second. Um, any further discussion? All right, Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
And now, Madam Chairman, I move to, um, deny the complaint. On the basis that the subject of it is no longer on the Board.
Second. I still second.
So we have a motion on the table to deny the complaint because the Board member is no longer serving on the Board. And we have a second. Do we have further discussion? Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
And now, Madam Chairman, may I propose we just all move on?
Do we have a second? So 4 and 4.1. All right, um, moving to 5, 5.0, complaint regarding High Desert ESD. You've all read it?
We can't take action, excuse me, we can't take action against another entity's employee.
Agreed.
Do we have a motion?
You can make a motion.
No, I'm just, I'm still thinking about it, but I don't know how, yeah.
Verbalizing it.
Yeah.
I'm gonna share this load.
I mean, I don't know how you do take action against a...
Yeah, Madam Chair, I move to not hear the complaint against ESD. I don't know how you do that.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the table to not hear the complaint against High Desert ESD, and we have a second. Is there any more discussion? All right, roll call vote, Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, so that was...
Madam Chairman, in a related matter, as part of that complaint, it has forced a, um, our legal counsel to declare a conflict of interest in certain matters. So I move that we authorize the business manager to contract for legal counsel, uh, in order to handle the matters in which High Desert ESD is conflicted out.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to have the business manager hire, hire legal counsel since we have a conflict of interest with our High Desert ESD legal counsel. And we have a second. Is there further discussion? All right, let's vote, Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. All right, um, 6.0, the approval of the consent agenda.
Madam Chairman, I move to adopt the consent agenda minus item 6.8, hiring of a transportation manager.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to adopt the consent agenda with the, um, with minusing out two, or 6.81, uh, the transportation manager hiring. And we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, let's vote, Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
And then, Madam Chairman, while we're under discussion there, I do note that the decision on the transportation manager is important and we need to, for the good of the district and the employees and the public, we need to get moving on this. I believe this is one where the conflict within the ESD is preventing us from moving forward. So I hope as fast as we can get legal counsel hired, we can move expeditiously, including the possibility of a special Board meeting, to get this settled one way or the other.
Duly noted. Okay. Moving on up, 7.0, finance report. Ms. Anna?
The monthly finance report in your Board packet was prepared prior to the school Board taking action to pause on some expenditures. So right now, if you look at the general fund projection on page three of the finance report, it, um, everything is projected to be very close to budget. But like I noted, there's, there are some expenditures that, if paused, would make a difference to the expenditure section of this report. So, we'll just keep, that's just something for you to know and nothing to change at this time. I do want to let you know, in the world of finance, our audit team that works, uh, that was from Poly Rogers, has broken off of Poly Rogers and formed their own company. And, um, Poly Rogers wrote a letter allowing that new company to just take us as a client along with all of our files. And we could legally just make a simple switch to the new firm because for these types of services, we can direct a point up to $100,000. However, we haven't done an audit RFP in quite a few years. So I actually did, um, I published a RFP, a Request for Proposal for Auditing Services. The new company that broke off from Poly Rogers is welcome to, um, submit a proposal as well as any other auditing firms that might be interested. And, um, my accounting team will review those proposals and, um, select a new auditing firm, a new auditing firm. It will not be Poly Rogers, but it may be the firm that came from Poly Rogers or it may be someone else. I'll give the Board an update on that in February.
Thank you, Anna.
So the next topic I have is, um, the Budget Committee Appointments. The Board had previously declared Budget Committee Position 10 as vacant, and we have not received any applications to date. We have also received another resignation from Mark James, position, I believe he's position nine. So in February, I'll bring to the Board an action item to declare that position as vacant as well. And we'll continue to just try to get new Budget Committee members to apply. And then, uh, because those positions don't have zones, if, uh, we've received multiple applications, the Board could appoint multiple positions in one meeting. So there's no action to take tonight. Okay, thank you, Anna. Okay, so 6.3, or I guess it's 7.3 now, um, this is the topic of a political consultant for bond preparation. At the December 9th Board meeting, the Board created a committee, which, at the time, it still is the Board as the committee, um, to hire a bond political consultant. There's, this is a good chunk of your packet that, uh, I think it's 26 pages or something. Before we get into all that, I want to ask, is the Board still interested in moving forward with this at this time?
That's a great question. I wondered the same thing when I was reading through the packet. Is this something that we really want to be doing with three Board members? Open for discussion?
I didn't want to do this in the first place because I didn't think we were ready, but we had two Board members who were going to be here after July 1, who were very anxious to move over to the November bond, and we needed this. I do not need to do anything special with polling to figure out where community sentiment stands right now around schools. So I don't think it would be a good expenditure of dollars at this time. I am a little confused by this proposal because you've got one for political consultants and then you've got some references to a bond cons... You're not talking bond counsel, you're just talking bond consultant.
It'd be a bond measure, a political consultant for a bond measure.
So this has nothing to do with bond counsel?
No.
Okay. So, no, I think we ought to drop this whole matter and this can be dealt with when things maybe someday are more calmed down.
That's probably the best thing.
Do we need to make a motion for that then? Because you needed action taken tonight.
No action.
No, there's no action.
Just no action then?
So the Board did take action in the December meeting to create that committee?
Mm-hmm.
And direct staff to work on the RFP?
I, I do think we should continue with a committee looking into our facilities needs and shaping this, but the timeline can come off, in my opinion. But I think it's worthwhile, and we have not lost the need to do something about facilities.
Correct.
So shaping where we're going to be in the future and looking at getting our stuff up to date and pursuing the awesome grant and all that, there's still the need for that. But they don't need a consultant to tell them what, how the political wind is blowing.
Okay, this particular committee was for the consultant, to, to select a consultant. So if you want to just keep the committee in place and eventually, at some point, decide it's time to move forward with a political consultant, then the committee exists.
Right.
And then you just direct me to bring the RFP back to you. And at that time, um, there are some details in here that I'll have questions about, like, what's important to you as far as scoring those RFPs and what's the timeline you want to use. So then I'll just bring that back to the Board at that time and then move forward with it when you're ready. And then just pause the RFP process until then. Does that sound like what the Board wants me to do?
Yes, sorry.
Yes.
Okay. I was writing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Okay, I'm on the next one too. Um, this is the, it's the Resolution for Designations and Authorizations, which we normally do at the beginning of the school year, and we did. Uh, but since we've had some changes, uh, with Superintendent on administrative leave and Dr. Hoff acting, or is the acting superintendent, we just need to update the signature authority so that people can, the right people can sign and those signatures can be legal. So you have a, a resolution number four, 04-2024-2025, that removes Melissa Skinner and adds Joel Hoff.
Madam Chairman, I move to update, to adopt the updated Resolution on Designations and Authorizations.
All right, second. So we have a motion on the table to adopt the resolution, um, of signatures, and we have a second. Is there further discussion? All right, Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Okay, flip the page. That was all for you, Anna. Uh, Superintendent Update 8.1, AP Program and Senior Year Opportunities Report?
Madam Chair, as they're getting started, just, uh, an update on the context. Uh, in previous years, we've had an AP and senior year report, uh, or committee. Um, the Board elected this year not to have a committee, but rather to get periodic reports from the high school team on the progress on these initiatives. So, that's what this is tonight.
Joel just took the first 30 seconds of my presentation, so, sorry about that. So included in the AP opportunities and the senior opportunities, we also wanted to, uh, give you an update on dual credits. So, we added, uh, five new dual credit classes this year. A couple of them were already in the works. And then a, a few of them also, our teachers, um, worked hard to get their classes articulated with colleges so that we can offer the Associate's Degree, the AOT, which was part of our Pathways Initiative that we started at the beginning of the year. So, big credit to those teachers that, that put in that work and now kids can, their freshman year, they can pursue an Associate's. And sometimes that's beneficial for them, sometimes it's not, but it's, it's really cool that we have that opportunity for kids, so, um, shout out to those teachers that did that. The Health 12s now articulates with Eastern, and then Kristi Shrock now has a class that articulates, um, with COCC called Vector Art, so that's pretty cool. And then the Communications 1 through EOU, those are all three, just to get the AOT, so. Can you talk about AP?
Good evening. All right, so the score report is the next thing you'll see. Um, the most notable thing here is to see the, the
The most notable thing here is to see the, the number our exams, number of exams taken has gone up. We were at a hundred and nineteen last year, and that is just a testament to how amazing our students are. And then additionally, with that big of an increase, the scores at three or higher remained nearly the same, just a very slight drop. So again, they're, they're taking the test and they're doing really well. The next page has more of a breakdown of what those scores looked like. You can see that English Lit and Comp, we have really high participation in that one. And then US Government and Politics, high scores, and United States History, again, high participation. Our juniors are really, really busy taking that test. And then their senior year, they're doing really well on the government's test. So I think that's pretty phenomenal. And then I also just want to note that any of these scores that are four or five, scores that are three, students are doing really, really well to get those scores. That takes a tremendous amount of time and effort on both our teachers and our students' part. So great job to our students, great job to our teachers. And then if you want further information on some of these scores, I'm happy to break that down for you.
Just one question, Bree. That microeconomics test, we, we don't teach that, do we?
No.
Would you just take it?
Yep. Every year, we have, we have at least one student decide to take classes outside of their content or area of, outside of what we take. So they'll take that curriculum online, and then they'll take the test. And we've got some bright students that do really well. It's pretty amazing. So some of the big takeaways, if you look at the data from five years to now, we are seeing again that huge participation trend upward, specifically in Lit and Comp and US History. We saw just, you know, almost double the amount of students taking it in prior years this last year. And we have improved performance in some of those particular categories that I called out on the last slide. And then finally, I want to note our high achievers. So students that are scoring in chemistry and physics, we're getting one or two students every year that are getting either a four or a five, and that's really, really amazing. So shout out to Jeff Loenbach with his work with all of our, our science students and really all of our AP teachers. They're working hard to prepare our students for these exams. The next slide, something that, that now we have all of our dual credit, or all of our AP classes are dual credit articulated, which is something we've been working towards for years, and we finally have it. And so this year, I was like, oh no, that means that our number of AP exam registrations is going to go down. And I was really worried about that. But we actually have more students registered for the exam right now than students that took it last year. So we should see that participation trend still increasing while expanding opportunities for students to get college credit while they're in high school in these highly rigorous classes. So again, that is a huge shout out to our teachers who put in endless hours making sure that their classes are on par with the colleges that they articulate with, as well as the AP exams that they're preparing students for those. So that's really amazing. It, it doesn't go without a lot of hard work to be able to achieve this level of rigor and participation in AP exams, so. The last thing I have to share is we talked, the last time we met, we had a lot of questions about how do kids do after high school? What are they doing in college? How many are graduating from college? Things like that. Because that, that report card from the state really just shows us who's college going. And so we now have access to that data. It's going to take some time to disaggregate it and get it into a, a report that will be usable for you all, but we will have that soon, and I'm really excited to be able to share that stuff out. The one thing that I can tell you is that our college going percentage from last year was forty seven percent, which is up thirteen percent from 2023. So again, our students are just amazing here in Creek County. They're wonderful humans that are kind and respectful, and they're also really smart. So good job, students, good job, teachers.
Okay. So one thing I think you asked, Scott, was for us to kind of look into some of the ways COCC has improved their processes with articulating and communicating that information out to families. And so we asked our good friend Krista Harris to share some of that stuff with us. And so one of the things they've done is they've kind of come up with more of a streamlined process to share that information with, with families. They have a template that they share with dates and deadlines. Students get an email, and as long as the students know who their guardian is, that the guardian also gets an email with all the payment information and deadlines. And they've also extended the deadline for payment, which aligns a little bit more with helping the schools for those kids that are eligible to get the financial help. It, it aligns better with the, the school's dates. And so also the families now have, they have till the drop deadline to, to get that stuff paid for. So hopefully that improves the process. I know it's been cumbersome with them, but they're aware of it, and they're working really hard to, to work with us. So I appreciate that about that. And then our communication, just in terms of dual credit, senior year opportunities, things of that nature, has improved. I think one big win we've had this year is our counselors have done the pathways meetings. Those have been really helpful to meet with students and families individually and kind of get them thinking about what they want to do after high school. Bree made a cute little trifold that we ended up not able to send out, but we, we have those available at the conference times. We had colleges here, I think we had COCC and EOU both here for our back to school night. All the stuff's posted online. And so we've really tried to kind of personalize our communication about those opportunities for families, and I think it's, it's making a difference. And then lastly, we just wanted to share, you know, we are on trimester schedule, and we've talked about this a lot, how that doesn't really lend itself to, you know, studying for the AP test as well. But as a way to mitigate that, we've, we have classes, like Heather Wiles teaches an AP prep class, that was all the way full. Jeff Loenbach has a morning, an early bird class that he is going to continue to do. And then this year, Connor Booster is going to do some tutoring sessions that we're going to get him paid for after hours. So we're excited about all those as well. Questions for us?
Madam Chairman, an observation and a question. The observation would be, we started the AP Senior Experience Improvement work in 22, 23, I think. And I was on that committee, and it is amazing how much progress you guys have made. And we got rid of the committee earlier this year because we said, staff's got it, we don't need board involved. And I just want to acknowledge how far incrementally, month by month, you have come with this, and thank you for that work. You mentioned this COCC collaboration?
Yeah.
I didn't hear you mention OSU Cascades. Where are we with articulating with the other local university?
Well, the one that you want us to look at for improving processes with COCC, we do, we don't articulate currently with OSU Cascades.
Well, articulate is a technical word, I shouldn't have used it. How do you, how do you, how's the collaboration going?
I don't know, I mean.
With trying to move our students through the college pipeline?
I know, we, I mean, our, our dual credit articulation with COCC is really great. We have really strong partnerships there. That's who we look to anytime we're trying to articulate a course. And with that, a lot of their College Now stuff, we meet with numerous staff members at COCC. So I feel like we're, we're pretty well, you know, that, that doorway is open, and I think we could further extend it to OSU Cascades, but currently it's really, a lot of it is just based with COCC. So yeah, we could, we could look to extend that with OSU Cascades, absolutely.
Thank you.
What would be a way, what would be a way to do that? It would help to improve that?
I don't know what their recruitment efforts are. I don't know whether they are here regularly in the high school, talking to our students. Financial considerations are the number one issue that weighs down on every family, so making sure that we have financial aid counselors on board to be able to help families map their path and say, yes, you can. Those are the straightforward ways, I think. And then just raising awareness about the many things you can do. I, I saw somebody at an OSBA conference whose theme of his speech was, if you can't see it, you can't be it. And you've just got to have people in the room to help kids understand the scope of their opportunities and where they mesh with their interests. And if they're not here, well, then they'll just try and follow their peers. So open new worlds wherever possible.
Gives us something to talk about next time.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, eight point two, school safety update. Mr. Bliss and Dr. Hoff.
Good evening. So I'm going to talk about some of the safety projects and things that we've accomplished, and then, then Dr. Hoff's going to talk about some, some other issues with bullying and some cameras, I think. So, you know, usually we do a presentation of the board every year to kind of give you an update on some of the safety things that, that we've been working on. One of the things that came up the last year, I know the board's aware of this because we put it in the policy, but we have Narcan now in every single school. It is available in almost every single district building as well. We do have some staff that have actually been trained to use Zimai, which is an injectable type medication. It works much faster, and it's more reliable than, than the nasal. So we had, then the acting police chief, Seymour, came and trained some of our staff on that. And so we do have some people that are trained to do that as well. We've actually increased the number of our SROs. So we have three SROs now. We got our third one last, last Monday, I believe. So we have three. So we have one at the high school, one at the middle school, and then we have one that's doing the elementary schools. We've changed the way we have been doing some of our exercises this year. So in the past, a lot of our emergency drills were a matter of, we'd tell everybody we're going to do an emergency drill, and then the office had pressed the, the button for the drill that we're doing, and, and everybody would just kind of go through the, the motions. So one of the things that we started doing this year was actually started creating scenarios. And we, instead of having the office initiate the response, we would have the staff member initiate the emergency to the office so that they could get a feel for what it would be really like if something were to happen. So we started doing that. I don't think we've done that at every single school this year, but at the ones that I've been able to attend, that's one of the things that we've tried to really do. We are, as far as physical safety, we're continually improving our locking systems. Some of the stuff that we did like eight, nine years ago, that, some of that stuff's actually starting to wear out, and we're replacing it with more robust and better materials. And training, the last, the last two years now, we have done face to face SRP training at each one of the schools so that staff is getting their, their lockdown and emergency drills face to face, instead of it being through a video or something like that, the way they have the opportunity to ask questions and present different scenarios. So some of the things that, we have some stuff that's upcoming that I want to talk about. Now, please be aware, I've said this before, I won't get into a lot of specific details on some of this because it's confidential. But I am planning to try and make some more improvements to the building shell. So that would be the outside areas of the buildings on the building itself. And then there's some fencing improvements that we need to make, so we're trying to make those. We're looking at doing some additional key card access, and then interior door improvements, as I, as I mentioned, where we are continually improving our locking systems. So that's just a good example of some of the things that we've been working on with safety. Does anybody have any questions for me?
So the, the second element of this is, you know, when we think of student safety, there's, there's this idea of creating, you know, a strong exterior, keeping our building safe, make sure our technology is, is in place and procedures are in place. And then I, I think another huge aspect comes to keeping kids safe in the buildings, in the sense of, before winter break, we had a number of public issues regarding bullying. So one of the key aspects we're taking to address that bullying is, one, I've asked every principal to come up with a, work with their leadership students to come up with an anti-bullying campaign that has already launched now that we're back from Christmas break. I didn't plan this, but as I look up, I see a pink bear, and it says, only you can prevent bullying with some sort of hashtag. So it looks like the high school at least gotten, got started with their, their, their anti-bullying campaign. But, but I think the biggest thing is, is creating some positive peer pressure for students that they feel that bullying is not okay. So it'll, it'll be great to see the leadership students from each school going out and presenting an anti-bullying kind of kindness campaign through the month of January. A second additional thing that I've asked for in regards to potential uptick in bullying prior to Christmas break was, we, we currently have, fun fact, over 200 security cameras throughout the district. Another fun fact, there's currently four in this room, so we're all, we're all on video. But I've asked that we review the elementary playground areas and middle school outdoor areas to make sure we have enhanced coverage there. So that way, as, as that's where most students are interacting in unstructured time, we'll have some enhanced video out there moving forward, technology's starting to look into there, just so that we can respond more, more properly to parents as, as we get these requests regarding bullying. Thank you.
I have a question for you about door locking procedures in the elementary schools. So at the beginning of this year, there was a big push to have all the doors locked all the time. And I've had quite a bit of parent feedback on that, and if you've read social media, you've had even more. And apparently, when you send a second grader to the bathroom, which is really frequently in second grade, and they come back and have to knock on the door to get readmissioned, it becomes very disruptive to the classroom environment. I don't know how to fix this problem because who wants to, say, unlock all the doors and then have an incident in your schools? On the other hand, this clearly is a challenge. So I would invite the administration to engage with elementary teachers about what's the right balance in order to protect our kids, but also to facilitate the operation of our schools. I don't quite know, and I don't know that we need a big protracted board discussion, but I would urge you to reconsider where we're at.
Yeah, Leland and I actually, I mean, it comes down, it has, you know, two of our key priorities, one of which is keeping students safe, right? We start there, and then two of which is maximize student learning. So Leland and I plan to, to review all that, and first of all, foremost, we got to keep kids safe. So we're going to be working over the next month to review that and see what we can do to, to make sure students are safe and that we're maximizing student learning.
And will you involve the elementary teachers in that discussion?
I'd love to involve the elementary teachers in that discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leland. Thank you, Dr. Hoff. Okay, moving to nine point oh, board update. Nine point one, the announcement of board member resignations and declaration of vacancies. Persuaded to District Policy BBC, the board announces that Jessica Brumble and Cheyenne Edgerly have resigned from the board. Ms. Brumble's resignation was effective December 10th, 2024, and Ms. Edgerly's resignation was effective January 9th, 2025. This means that the board is also declaring board vacancies from Zones One and Three. Persuaded to District Policy BBE, vacancies on the board will be filled through board appointment. The board appointee must be a legally registered voter and a resident within the district for one year, immediately preceding the appointment, and resident of the zone from which the vacancy has occurred. The board shall advertise for a 20-day period to find an eligible resident from the same zone. If an eligible zone resident cannot be found, the board shall appoint one of the eligible residents from the district. Policy BBE also provides that in the event of multiple vacancies, the position vacated first will be filled first. Because Ms. Brumble's resigned first, the board will fill her Zone Three position first. The board will then fill Ms. Edgerly's Zone One position next. Since the filing deadline for the May 2025 board election is March 15th, 2025, if the board is able to fill the vacancies before that date, the person the board appoints will serve until June 30th, following the May election, at which time the individual elected in the May primary will fill the remaining portion of the unexpired terms of Ms. Brumble and Ms. Edgerly, since neither were up for reelection this year. If the board is unable to fill the vacancies before the March 15th, 2025 filing deadline, then the person the board appoints will serve until June 30th of the next election year. Board members, we will proceed with a 20-day advertisement position, but at this time, we also need to discuss the process we will use to screen, evaluate, interview, and select candidates. And I'm also going to note in there that today, if you go to the district website, if you go to School Board, and then you come down to school zones, maps, right, I got, I got to look at this one time quickly today, and you click on it, you can enter your address to see what zone you are in. It's actually very, very, very handy in case you're not sure what zone that you would be actually in. So, that being said, here we are.
So, Madam Chairman, I'd start out by moving to declare Zone One and Zone Three positions vacated. vacated.
I will second that. So we have a motion on the table to declare that zone one and zone three have vacancies, and we have a second. Is there further discussion? All right, let's vote. Scott?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Aye for myself as well.
And then on the application, this is, I have no strong position on this either way, but would it be worthwhile asking the question, are you willing to stand for election? To make it clear to people that that this is a short-term assignment unless they do?
I should, I should, I should, but yeah, fill the rest of the term and then intend to.
Do you intend to, it might.
Do you intend to reapply?
Right. I mean, it might, might influence your decision ultimately.
Are you saying add that to this application?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know, what do you, what do you think, Jen?
I think if they're.
I don't think you should disqualify someone from.
No.
Being in the position.
No, it's just information at that point.
I mean.
It's a valid question to ask.
Worth looking at?
Yeah.
At least they're on notice then, when they've answered it, that their time's going to be very short if they're not looking at standing for election.
On this application.
The other thing that I think is really important is to make it very clear to people that they're going to file, March 15th is the filing deadline. They are barely going to be appointed before they were able to file.
That's.
That's two months, almost to the day.
Assuming we don't make any appointments for at least 30 days.
But the people who are applying for these zones right now wouldn't be.
They could be candidates for the July 1, or for the, yeah, to take their seats July 1, if they got elected. Because you've got, we're appointing through June 30th. These positions will be on the ballot in May. And then they would have to get reelected in order to continue past June 30th.
Zone one and three will be back on the ballot?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Because they were.
That means you would too, because you're elected at the same time.
We could potentially have, depending on what you and I do, up to four seats open on this coming ballot.
Dear Lord, help me.
And Jen alone survives.
I feel like I'm in the middle of a.
I think my math is wrong then, because I thought those, those zone one and three and whatever zone you are came in in 24.
Well, they would, but because these occurred before the midterm, now they go on the ballot along in a midterm election for two-year terms. We'll get back on track in two years, but.
I see.
Yeah, it's the way we're in law works. So that's why I think we should tell people right up front what they're signing up for. If you want a three-month stint on the school board, that sounds a whole lot more appealing than 116 years like I've served.
Choices, it was all about a choice. I would like you to choose again.
Thank you, no.
Gotcha, I, I understand, okay.
So I think it's worth asking this question, that's why.
Yes, then that is a valid question to ask.
And that's easy enough just to add onto there. And that's on the district website, correct?
So, do we have other questions people want to add to the application form? Because I'm about to make a motion to adopt it with that question.
I do not believe I had anything else.
Madam Chairman, I move to adopt the application as provided in our packet with the addition of a question asking, do you intend to run for election in May of 2025?
Second.
Okay, so we have a proposal on the table to adopt the application with the additional question of, do you intend to run for election May of 2025? And we have a second, we have further discussion. All right, let's vote. Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you for that additional question. And do we, 20 days, so does that start effective tonight or is that tomorrow?
20 days is the time that the advertising has to run, not necessarily the time within which we have to make the appointment.
Okay.
So if it gets out.
So how long are we open for accepting applicants?
20 days or longer, you can establish a longer timeline if you want to. I think that's right. But it's at least 20 days.
The minimum, right?
So today is the 13th.
13th. So I mean, if we had it up and running by tomorrow, I mean, that's a 14th. 20 days, we're into February, Super Bowl time.
Would it be worthwhile to be able to, does it make sense to be able to get your 20 days and be able to review the applicants and appoint by your February meeting? Is that a workable timeline?
It could be. February meeting is the 11th? Yeah, no, the 10th.
The 10th.
What's our, when's 20 days run?
Enough time?
So February 10th would be the next.
We should first ask when this can reasonably get out. When we pub, when, in between public records, requests, complaints, minutes, whatever, when can we publish this actually?
Could we say Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Does that be okay, and then I can do it tomorrow?
Sure.
So Wednesday, the 15th?
Two, three, so like the 5th, they'd have to be back. There's no way that we could get appointments in on the 10th. We'd have to call a special meeting.
Or get a.
Do the appointments.
20 business days or 20 days?
Just says 20 days.
Straight days.
So you said February 4th or 5th?
So the, if we publish on the 15th, then the 20th would run on the 4th, 20 days.
So the close of business on the 4th?
I would say the 5th, just add one more day.
Just to be safe?
Nobody argues about which end of the day we're counting.
Sure. So that gives you five days.
So that gives you the 5th, and that's not enough time to publish it on the agenda, have your interviews.
No.
And publish it on the agenda.
Right.
So it wouldn't work for a 10th appointment. But we could have a special meeting. Because the other thing we're working against is if they really are going to file, they have to file.
By March 15th.
I think it's March 15th, although March 15th is a Saturday, so I don't know if that's exactly right.
So.
But they don't have very much time, so they got to get appointed and then they got to get filed.
Well, I mean, to me, if they are, if this is something that they are wanting to choose to do, they would probably have their paperwork ready to go. But that's me.
Well, I wanted to make one other suggestion, too. I don't need any more politis, politicization of this board right now. So I would suggest that each of us at some upcoming, probably especially called meeting, appoint three people, that's just normally would be last, but there's only three of us, for a committee of nine, which would meet to review the applicants and recommend applicants to us as a board. Now, we don't have to take the committee's recommendation, but let's have some more public process in this from citizens.
So we would.
We would select three committee members each for a total committee of nine.
Right.
You'll have to come back as a full board and appoint that, we can't do that individually. And then that committee of nine would meet and make a recommendation back to us for the two appointments.
I see.
Now, we can go on and we can do whatever we want to, with or without the recommendation, we don't have to pay attention, but it is helpful to have citizen input for more than just three of us. So that's an out-there idea that you might hate, or you might like.
No, I think it's, it's.
I like the idea of a committee.
And I would also add to that, that maybe out of the nine, the chair appoints the chair of the committee. So somebody has to appoint him. And we would need to come back long enough to appoint the committee, but that can happen while the 20 days is running.
We can work on that.
Yeah.
Does that require a motion to establish committee?
Doesn't everything require a motion?
I think about everything, yeah.
So, Mr. and Madam Chairman, is that okay if I move forward that motion? Would that work for everybody?
Yes.
So I move to establish a 20-day deadline, or 21-day deadline, well, I move to establish a deadline of Jan.
February 5th.
February 5th, thank you, for the return of applications based on a publication date of January 15th. And to require those applications to be submitted to the district office, not later than 5:00 in person or by mail or by email. Late applications will not be accepted.
Yep.
And that we appoint a committee comprised of three members to be appointed, nominated by each of us and approved by the board in the next few weeks, with a chair appointed by the board chair to recommend candidates for these positions. That was actually a motion, which I'm sure Tammy got verbatim.
I'll let her get pre-typing. I will second.
There's a lot of ands in there.
There were a lot of ands.
All right, here we go.
There were no buts.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to post the vacancies on January 15th, to then have a 21-day open application process that has to be done by February 5th at 5:00, and that can be done in person, by mail, or email. There will be no late applications accepted. And we, the board will each appoint three people.
Nominate three people.
Nominate three people.
Board members will nominate three each.
Three people for a committee of nine, and that the board chair will then at some point appoint a board chair for that committee.
From within the nine.
From within the nine. Did I miss anything?
And they would recommend.
Oh, and they would, yes, and then they would recommend to the board.
To fill the two vacancies.
The vacancy positions and recommendation.
And that is, we should probably note, and that is not a binding recommendation.
And that is not a binding recommendation.
Can I add a friendly amendment to say 5:00 P.M.?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, 5:00 P.M.
5:00 P.M.
Amended.
Pacific Coast time.
And we have a second on the table. Is there further discussion?
Public meetings, yes, they would be public meetings.
Thank you for that reminder as well. Okay, is there further discussion? Ms. Tammy, did you get all that?
Yep.
Oh, awesome, okay. So let's vote. Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you for all of that.
That was really good summarizing on your part, Madam Chair.
I tried to summarize your words.
You did an excellent job.
Some days. Okay. Ooh. Ooh, policy updates. 10.0. Very excited. Dr. Hoff, you are up, sir.
We made it to policy. So this, this actually should be pretty quick. This was a board request. You'll find in your board packet, three policy updates from OSBA. This is from the April 2024 update, the November 2024 update, and December 2024 update. What I want to remind the board is that we also, the board joined the Community School Boards Association a few, a couple meetings back. We have reached out to them and we will also intend to have them review policies and provide feedback as well. So these are from the OSBA. One thing that Ms. Parker and I are doing is prioritizing. You'll see in these packets, it has the legislative updates and why we need to change policies. They're sorted into three categories, required, highly recommended, and optional. We are prioritizing for the board all the required policies. You'll see here in the screen in front of you, we have some scheduled policy work sessions. So the first one scheduled is January 23rd coming up. We're spending a lot of time together lately, that's 5:30, 8:30, and we'll bring as many as feasibly possible required policies. We're getting feedback from legal, as well as we'll send those to the community school boards just to review if they have any revisions as well. We'll bring that to the board, the board can kind of determine what they want to do with those particular policies. In addition, the board asks that we always wait 14 days between first reading so that community can see policy as well. So we'll make sure to state that timeline. So with that, let's quickly look, do we have any issues with the currently scheduled work sessions?
Yes. Madam Chairman, I indicated I would not be able to attend that at the time we set it, but we had four board members, so who cared? But now that's a problem, because I do have a conflict that night.
On January 23rd?
Yep.
Okay. Well, Mr. Cooper.
I could move it back to the 22nd if that would work for people.
Are you up on the 22nd?
Yes, I can do that.
And that's a Wednesday?
Are you talking January, not February?
Yeah.
Correct.
Sorry, thank you for your consideration.
We'll consider it. Okay, we'll look at getting that moved, if the, if it works out for the rest of the team and admins.
Yep. Next up, the February and March dates, do those look feasible to everyone?
They do to me.
I think we already have those. I think Ms. Tammy sent them out to us.
What are, tell me those dates again?
February 24th and then March 20th. You're good?
I'm good, I'm bold.
March 20th. Madam Chairman, it's possible I would have to join the February one remotely, but that can be done.
The February one would be remote?
Not quite determined, but possible.
Copy.
Perfect, well, we have, Tammy does an awesome job, but we just have this queue of the required policies, so we're just going to work our way through that as we move forward.
Yep.
Thank you.
Did you need us to take action on a couple of these?
Yeah, I believe 9.5 and 9.6, Mr. Leland Bliss is going to tell us about policies. I believe this is the second or third reading of.
Oh, I'm sorry.
EBCA and EDCB.
I was on the wrong line, I still had Dr. Joel Hoff on that one and.
On the board.
Phew, I need my glasses fixed. Sorry, Leland.
Okay, so board policy, well, on both of these, what we did is we consulted with legal counsel, Joel and I did, and we decided to just go ahead back to the legal statute and include all the languages in the legal statute within the policy. So what you see is, that's, that's pretty much what the IRS and the affected House bill that one of these came from.
I remember the concern was what was being, language being used with local.
Correct. One of the, one of the words that was in there was, the, the legal statute says to use the word lockout. We like to use the word secure because lockout sounds too much like lockdown. So what we did was we put lock, lockout back in the policy and then in parentheses, we put secure in there.
Do you want to adopt them as we go through them one by one?
That's what I was just going to, that's what I was just going to ask, is do we want to run through all of them and do one motion, or do we want to do a motion per each one? to run through all of them and do one motion, or do we want to do a motion per each one? Okay.
Why don't we run through all of them?
Okay, we'll go ahead and run through all of them.
Done with me, then? Do you have any questions for me?
Not on safety threats. Next one.
We still got emergency.
I think you're still up.
You're still there.
So, we did the same thing with that, with the second policy, with EBCB, is we just, we did include all, there's, it adds quite a bit of context to the policy, but we included everything that's in the legal statute. There's, there's some language in there that's repeated, and one of those is where it talks about how we have to hold our first fire drills within the first 10 days of school. It's addressed at a later location in the policy, so we redlined that one out. And then there's a section at the bottom that we redlined out that's actually addressed in the other policy regarding whether boards can go into executive session to.
In the blue, where it says lockout and then secure, that's the same?
That's, that matches the verbiage that's in the, in the other policy.
Okay. Any questions on that one?
No.
Okay. And then, I think we're at Dr. Hoff again for the.
Yep, so, JFC EBA R. This is third reading. The board requested that we come back with, put the actual consequences in the policy. So, you'll see we struck number nine at the previous version, and then I worked with Mr. Huffin and Mr. Hayes on, you look on the back, "Consequences for Non-Compliance with Cell Phone Guidelines," and that talks through the three-step process in terms of consequence that a student would get.
Okay.
So, those consequences would be district-wide.
Consistent, it doesn't matter.
Not building.
Yeah, district-wide. You know, schools, yeah, district-wide. And this is primarily, I know some elementary students, it's becoming more common to have a phone, but this is primarily an issue at the middle school, high school level.
So, I have a slight issue with number two. The language here is unless it's authorized in advance by the principal or designated for specific, rigorous, and intentional academic purposes, i.e. photography, health or safety reasons, or in the event, blah, 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 blah. I don't think you mean i.e., I think you mean e.g. If you're saying i.e., that means only in the case of photography, whereas e.g. would be photography is and the example, but not an exclusive example. So, I don't think you mean i.e.
Mr. Cooper, I learn something new every day. Let's go e.g. instead of i.e.
Pause for you.
Is that the only?
That's the only.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to adopt EBCA, EBCB, and JFC EBA R. with the i.e. e.g. swap.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the table to adopt policy EBCA, EBCB, JFC EBA AR with the term i.e. taken out and e.g. put in. Do we have further discussion? All right, let's vote. Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I, yes as well. Thank you. Thank you, Leland. Thank you, Dr. Hoff. Okay, policy updates. Okay, and this is where, on the agenda, things have flip-flopped, so I'm going to read upcoming dates now. Let's see, we have no school, Martin Luther King Day, January 20th, and school board policy work session has been moved from January 23rd to the 22nd, from 5:30 P.M. at the district office. We have a school board meeting on February 10th at 6:30 P.M., and then we have district-directed staff development, February 14th, Happy Valentine's Day, and President's Day, February 17th, there's no school. We then also have a school board policy work session, February 24th at 5:30 at the district office. Twenty, oh, 23rd, sorry.
I didn't catch, did you say the 22nd of January?
22nd of January.
Okay.
Do you want me to correct something? Are you sure? Okay. Okay, now we're going to move on to public comments, and I want to reiterate how important it is for all of us to be respectful, kind, and courteous tonight, and with that said, I will be strictly adhering to our public comments policy, BDDH. We will keep the comments to four minutes. You will hear a bell chime when there's 30 seconds left of your time, and at four minutes, another bell will chime, and the time is up, and we need to move forward, please. Please also note that the board will not hear any comments regarding any individual district staff member. The board has been assured by attorneys from two different organizations that this restriction is not a violation of the First Amendment within the jurisdictions of the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals in the state of Oregon. Citizens are welcome to submit their comments and complaints about specific employees using the district's complaint procedures, which are posted on our website. So, let me go to my next page. If you wish to make a public comment, please complete a comment card, which is done, and they're right here. If you're viewing online, please indicate that you would like to speak in the comment section. When you're recognized, please state your name and any group you are representing. We've already been through keeping your comments to no more than four minutes, and a bell will chime at 30 seconds remaining, and another bell will chime at the four minutes when it's ended. A group of visitors with a common purpose should designate a spokesperson for the group. If you wish to request that a board consider an agenda item, please contact the superintendent at least one week prior to the next board meeting, acting superintendent. Per policy, BDDH, the board will not hear comments regarding any individual district staff member, and if you have a complaint about a specific staff member, please contact the superintendent, acting superintendent, or the board chair. And with that said, we will begin. And the first person we have is Tammy Prescott.
Hi. Oh, your button. There, okay, perfect. Once again, I want to say thank you for all your hard work and all that you do for us. Last time I was here in December before you, I talked about my concerns about doctrine and making sure that we have sound doctrine in our curriculum, and I gave you two examples of kids from my classroom who recognized something that was in the stories that didn't line up with their beliefs or their values. Tonight, I'm still on that theme of doctrine, but I have a book, okay? It's an excellent little book called Simon's Hook. I have used this book the last 11 years of my teaching career. If I'd known about it before, I'd have used it earlier, okay? So, it was, copyright is 2000. It is now 2025. So, this is a book that has stood the test of time. So, it's called Simon's Hook. It's about teases and put-downs. So, I'm not talking about bullying, or victims, or bystanders, okay? This is what happens in the classroom on an everyday basis. This is before we get to that bullying stage, okay? So, teachers work towards getting their classrooms to hum along, where everybody's engaged, everybody's learning, everybody's participating, okay? And there is, it's a sweet spot that we like to see happen, and it usually doesn't happen at the beginning of the year. You build towards that, and you've made it by the middle of the year. When you're looking for that sweet spot, you have to build toward it, and there's many elements that help make up that sweet spot and that magic that takes place. That magic impacts test scores. It impacts the school grade. Every teacher wants that magic to happen. This is one element of making that magic happen. So, it's a story about a boy named Simon who goes through an incident. He gets called some names, he gets teased, he gets put down, and he gets upset about it. This book is about helping students understand that they have agency in those situations. You don't have to take the hook. This book presents five other things that you can do. So, in my classrooms, I always had a fishing pole with a Chanel hook on it, with a woven fish. We would introduce this book right away at the first of the school year, and when a situation came up, we'd get down the fishing pole, and we would act out what they could have done instead. We laughed, we cried, we learned, and we got really good at it. Then, I would have my, I got 30 seconds. So, I, I have much more to say, but I don't have the time. So, I would highly recommend this book to be in every third, fourth, and fifth grade classroom of the Kirk County School District, that we do this across the board for several years. Those kids grow up, they make it to middle school, they make it to high school, and on to adulthood. They have a common language, a common story, and a common way to solve problems.
Thank you. Natalia Crass? Did I say the first name correctly? Yes, it should go green.
Is this good?
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Natalia Crass, and I'm a senior student here at Kirk County High School. With this public comment, I would like to address the current members of the board, as well as the resigning members of the board. Late last spring, when the position for superintendent was open, I, along with several other students, were chosen to participate as student interviewers of the candidates to help the students feel represented in this process. When interviewing the future superintendent, it was made very clear that the voices of us, the students, who are most directly affected by any school board decisions, would be heard, taken into account, and seriously considered. In fact, a student council had been created, giving the school board an opportunity to directly connect with students of all ages to discuss a variety of issues, making it seem as a student opinion was a treasured aspect of guiding our school system. Overall, it sounded very exciting and promising. Fast forward eight months, however, the week before Christmas break, we, the students, have to find out over social media that a beloved and highly respected and successful member at our school, staff member at our school, our athletic director, is to be either reassigned or fired entirely. It certainly didn't feel like we, as students, were involved in that decision. And yet, this most directly affects us, not just as athletes, but as an entire student body. Clearly, if we had been involved, things might have been different. As many of you know, we, the students at CCHS, staged a walkout on December 16th. We peacefully demonstrated our dissatisfaction with the decision that was made and our desire to return things the way they were. And this hasn't just been a standalone event. It seems as though there have been complaints levied against other Kirk County School District staff members as well. Current school board members, resigning school board members, parents, I urge you to remember that this toxic environment and behavior deeply affects us, the students. So, I'm asking you, what is the end goal here? What is this really about? How does this end, and what are we trying to achieve? Please, and I believe I speak for the entirety of the student body, support our staff and admin who show up for us every day, and allow them to continue caring about us and supporting us. We, as students, know what we want, and I ask that you hear me when I say this, and that you keep our best interests in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Lisa Wagner.
Just have to tell you, I'm very nervous, so hold on. Lisa Wagner, Route 12 Kirk County School District. The transportation department is more than just a team. We are a family, working together with a shared commitment to the safety and well-being of our students. Over the past few weeks, our unity and dedication to our mission has only grown stronger. We take pride in our roles, going above and beyond to ensure the students are transported safely and reliably, whether on our daily routes or on field trips. Transportation is a critical component, component of the educational system. The importance of leadership in this department cannot be overstated. When we learned that the district had hired somebody without the necessary experience or qualifications to manage transportation, it was deeply concerning to say the least. The role of a transportation manager requires comprehensive understanding of bus operations, student management, route planning, state and federal regulations governing transportation. Unfortunately, this individual does not meet those expectations. While our team is committed to support leadership, it is not reasonable or safe for bus drivers to train and manager on foundational responsibilities like performing free trip, inspections, understanding safe route planning, or managing student behavior. These are skills and knowledge that must be brought to the role on day one. This is not an entry-level position. I urge the board to allow the district to take the time needed to hire a fully qualified candidate for this position. The right person will not only have the technical skills and the certifications, but also the leadership qualities to help us, help this department to achieve its full potential. Filling the position quickly should not outweigh the need to fill it correctly. We ask the district to prioritize the long-term success of transportation by choosing a candidate who is ready to leave and elevate this department. We are committed to support this process and look forward to welcoming a leader who shares in our dedication to excellence and safe student travels. Student safety.
Next, we have Rocky Minor.
So, I'm here to represent the parents, grandparents, and community members that have been supporting Jacob Mann, Rob Bonner, and Brian Kissel. But first, I want to take this time and start off with a huge thank you to Scott, Jennifer, and Steve. Thank you for your service, your support, and your stability. And thank you, Joel, for stepping in during this very difficult time.
Mr. Minor?
Yes.
I just need to remind you that we can't give positive or negative feedback in regards to staff members.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
We appreciate all that you do. It's our hope and our prayer that we can now start the healing process for our schools and our community, to move away from personal attacks toward our school staff and back to a focus on our students and the success of our schools, to build trust, not fear, calm, not chaos, clarity, not confusion, and love, not anger. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minor. Sorry, turn the page.
And before I go and sit down, I'd also like to just take this time to say to the bargaining committee representing our school district that we urge you to finalize the contract for classified staff. that we urge you to finalize the contract for classified staff. They've worked without a contract now for well over 200 days. They're feeling discouraged and disrespected. We want our bus drivers, maintenance team, tech crew, teacher aides, and secretaries to know they are respected and appreciated. They are vital member of our school family. Please give them a contract that shows them they are appreciated and supported. At a minimum, give them a contract that is at the level of other highly successful school districts in our state. And we would appreciate sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Okay, Jake Tomlinson, did I get your name correct? Yes. John Tomlinson, I'm so sorry.
My name is John Tomlinson, community member, Kirk County resident since 1986. I'm not here to talk about some of the recent issues that concern all of us, but I will start by saying thank you to each of you. And thank you to the people behind me right now. Thank you to all of you for being concerned enough to be here. I've been to some board meetings where we were it. And I'm glad to see so many out tonight. I'm here to speak to long-term policy, philosophy, and standing in this community of our school district. I have three main points. They're very concise, very brief. Please, I'm appealing to you, please, say no to DEI. There are better options, far more fitting to our human condition. That's point number one. Point number two. Please say no to DEI. There are far better options, far more fitting to our human condition. When I get through here, you'll have time for questions, otherwise I'll yield my time. Point number three, and this is just as important as the other two. Please say no to DEI. There are better options that are far more fitting to our human condition. I'll yield my time unless you have questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I had an agenda item we skipped over about a possible recurring work session.
Oh.
We were going to do that at 10.1.
We were going to do that at 10.1.
So what I wanted to suggest was that for this interim period, when there's only three of us and we cannot talk to each other because any two of us constitutes a quorum of the board, it has become really difficult to have basic conversations around things like, what's the agenda look like? So Redmond City Council, some years ago, when it was facing a similar situation, instituted a practice of a morning work session once a week, about 90 minutes when they would get together. It's a public work session, people are welcome to come, usually occurred before the working hours. And the board members would come and talk to staff about whatever needed to be discussed. I think we might want to short-term implement that because then staff would have to put together an agenda such as they knew it and publish it. But at least we could work through all the logistics and question marks that come up after a meeting. This business of not being able to talk to each other at all isn't working.
Is this on a Saturday or Sunday? For us that.
We can pick our day. My preferences would be a Friday or a Monday, but.
I would have to try and decline a Monday because that is my busiest day ever. Are we, are we talking like 5:00 a.m.?
Redmond actually started its meetings at 6:30, but you can do whatever you want to do.
You laugh.
But that's the other thing. I need to get back to work.
Amen.
Paid work that I get paid to do, not this half-time job.
That's how I pay my bills, is my day-to-day job, so yes.
So I need to create some intentional space somewhere in the week where we can talk school stuff and then y'all can leave me alone.
Did you say it's once a week?
That's what Redmond is doing.
Okay.
And I would say a time limited to, you know, 90 minutes should be more than enough. And if we don't have business, then we don't need to meet, but.
Steve, do you have comments?
No, I think that would.
Sorry.
I think that would help with, that would alleviate a lot of problems.
Well, what are you proposing?
Well, you don't like Monday, and I can't do Tuesday, so let's pick another day.
Well, I mean, I, this is publicly, I have to check with my boss. I, I mean.
So what time do you start?
6:15.
I wasn't interested in a 3:15 meeting.
I'm done by 3:30?
Well, we could do it by Zoom. Can you do a midday meeting?
Not for 90 minutes, maybe 10. And I'm not trying to be a pain here, but.
No, 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 I understand.
Can this, let's see. Is this something I can try and work out logistically?
Yeah, absolutely. Why don't we just leave it to the discretion of the chair to work out?
Scott, we do have that, Mr. Cooper, we have that board work session next Wednesday, January 22nd. So maybe we can kind of think through some details and bring some proposals to that work session next Wednesday evening.
Sure.
Great idea, Mr. Hoff.
We've got to do something different. This is not working.
Agreed. Okay, so at the work session, we can figure this out. And that gives me time to figure something out. So what days are better for you?
Well, if we're doing it mornings, then it's Wednesdays or Thursdays or Fridays for me.
Steve, do you have a preference? In your busy schedule?
No, any of those work.
Okay, all right, so that'll, that'll give me something to work through then. And then we can come to the table at our work session next week. Thank you, Dr. Hoff, for the reminder on that. So that was 10.1. Okay, we are now going to adjourn this meeting at 8:08. Thank you.
Thank you.